All of our commissioners have had the administration of the oath of office, so we are going to move on to item four, roll call. Commissioner Alvarez, Commissioner Eliz, Commissioner Fraga Sines.
Here.
Commissioner Henderson.
Here.
And Commissioner Nemeth. Here. And that will bring us to item five, the selection of a planning commission chair and vice chair. May I please have a nomination for the position of chair?
I'd like to make a nomination for Stacia Nemeth to be planning chair.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. I have a motion from Commissioner Fraga Sines and a second from Commissioner Henderson. May I please get a roll call vote on that? Commissioner Alvarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Eliz.
Yeah.
Commissioner Fraga Sines.
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson.
Yes.
And Commissioner Nemeth. Yes. Thank you. Now you must call me Chair Nemeth from this point forward.
Yes.
Chair Nemeth.
That was just a little spit.
Just had to do that, no. Okay, then we will move on to the selection of the vice chair. And I would like to nominate Dean Henderson as vice chair. May I will make a motion to that effect?
I second it.
Alright, we have a motion from Chair Nemeth and a second from Commissioner Fraga Sines to have Commissioner Henderson serve as our vice chair. May we have a roll call vote on that, please? Commissioner Alvarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Eliz.
Yes.
Commissioner Fraga Sines.
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson.
Yes.
And Chair Nemeth. Yes. Alright, congratulations, Vice Chair Henderson. And thank you all for participating in that. And that will move us on to item six, the review of our agenda. Ms. Taggart.
Thank you. The only thing I wanted to mention is that item ten A has been requested to be continued to the August Planning Commission meeting.
Okay, perfect. So we will not pay attention to that item this evening. That will move us to item seven. May I please get a motion to waive the full reading of all resolutions in the agenda?
So, second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Fraga Sines and a second from Vice Chair Henderson. May I get a roll call vote on that, please? Commissioner Alvarez?
Yes.
I apologize. Commissioner Alvarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Eliz.
Yes.
Commissioner Fraga Sines.
Yes.
Vice Chair Henderson.
Yes.
And Chair Nemeth. Yes. Alright, the motion passes with five yes votes. That will bring us to item eight on our agenda, which is public comments for any non-agenda items or on our consent calendar. This evening, our consent calendar consists of approving the minutes for our last month's meeting. So if you are here to speak on that or on any non-agenda item, please come forward, state your name, and you will have three minutes. Alright, seeing nobody, that will move us to our consent calendar. May I please get a motion to approve the minutes from our last month's planning commission meeting?
I make a motion to approve those minutes?
Second it.
I have a motion from Vice Chair Henderson and a second from Commissioner Fraga Sines. May I please have a roll call vote? Commissioner Alvarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Alvarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Eliz.
Yes.
Commissioner Fraga Sines.
Yes.
Vice Chair Henderson.
Yes.
And Chair Nemeth. Yes. I'm gonna stop for one second. Commissioner Eliz, Eliz, how do we want to say your last name?
Eliz.
Eliz, okay, thank you. Fraga Sines, let's get them all right. Henderson, Alvarez, okay, we are all set then. Okay. Yeah, no embarrassment here. There's nothing worse than just sitting there having your name not said right, so.
Eliz.
Eliz, 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 okay.
I'll get it, I promise.
Alright, then that will move us to our public hearing. Since ten A has been continued, we will start with item ten B.
Good evening, commissioners. Before you is a request to establish a tobacco retailer for the sale of tobacco and smoking-related products located at twenty-five fifty-three East Palmdale Boulevard, Suite I. The project site is indicated in yellow in this aerial photo. The business will take over an existing tenant space of a developed shopping center. The proposed tobacco retailer is an allowable use within the general commercial zone, subject to approval of a conditional use permit application. No exterior modifications are proposed, and the proposed hours of operation are nine AM to ten PM daily. There'll be two employees each working a six-hour shift. Sorry? I think you got a point, maybe that one? Oh, sorry. Okay. As shown in the floor plan, all merchandise will be located within display cases or behind counters, allowing only store employees to have immediate access to tobacco and smoking products. In addition, all store employees will be required to attend a responsible tobacco retailer training program and comply with all conditions of approval and applicable laws regarding the advertising, display, or sale of tobacco and smoking products. It should also be noted that the sale of flavored electronic cigarettes is currently prohibited within the city. Pursuant to the Palmdale Municipal Code, tobacco retailers have a five-hundred-foot distance separation requirement from sensitive uses, including schools, commercial daycare centers, hospitals, and public parks. As shown here, there are no sensitive uses within five hundred feet of the proposed business location. The Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department provided a summary of calls for service and crime history for the project site between June eighth, twenty-twenty-one, and June eighth, twenty-twenty-two. And the report indicates there were eight calls for service. After review of the service calls at the subject property, the LA County Sheriff's Department has not indicated any opposition to the approval of this conditional use permit. However, if the proposed business generates an increase in the number of calls for service, the Sheriff's Department may request a subsequent review of the CUP by the planning commission. And with that, staff is recommending that the planning commission adopt resolution number PC twenty-two-two-zero-two-seven, approving additional use permit twenty-two-zero-zero-four, and find that the project is categorically exempt from environmental review. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Stafford. So at this time, I allow our commissioners to ask staff any technical questions they may have on their report. Do any of the commissioners have technical questions for staff at this time? Okay?
On what we're seeing now, how many of these businesses already in that surrounding area?
Ms. Stafford?
There are three located in that corner. So there's the two gas stations, and then there's another retailer on the northeast corner, northwest corner of Twenty-Fifth and Palmdale Boulevard.
Okay, thank you. So there are three in that area.
Let me be a little more clear. This type of business that's.
Excuse me, one minute, please. Are you asking them a question? Because this is the time right now you may ask technical questions.
Yes, I'm asking the technical questions.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other businesses of this that we're seeing on the table now in that surrounding area?
There's another tobacco retailer on the other side of Twenty-Fifth Street East.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alright, any other questions for staff? Okay, then at this time, I will open the public hearing. If you are here to speak on this item, please come forward and state your name, and you will have three minutes to speak. I sense a Javier Flores coming my way. Hi Javier, welcome.
On the thirtieth of June, from that agency. League of United Latin American Citizens has decided to take the issue of alcohol and tobacco outlet proliferation as an environmental social justice issue that they will be addressing from this day forward. So as a representative of that organization, I want to tell you, especially the new commissioners, that we've been trying to get the city to be sensitive and responsive to the needs of our children in Zico nine-three-five-five-oh. And we've informed them for many years now that we have the highest crime rates and the lowest health rates probably in the county. Okay, not just the city, not just the EV, but the county. Highest crime rates. And studies, previous studies that are very due one that just is going to be presented to the city council on the third of August will has demonstrated and will demonstrate again the link between outlet density and high crime. Now, it will not show causal effect because no study does, but it will show correlating impacts. And we've been telling you this for at least ten years, and we've been telling the council for twenty-two years. And they've heard us, and they said, "Let's put these laws on the books. Let's put these laws on the books." And we've got all kinds of laws on the books. They've never implemented them, and they've never enforced them. And when we come here to this council, we say, "Please, let's change the laws," because that's part of the problem for tobacco. There's no distance requirement that separates one tobacco outlet from another. That's what should be happening, and it doesn't exist. And that's why you're being asked to allow this, and that's why you may. But if you take a look at the law, your own ordinance, and you see all the wherasses, you've got the justification and the wherasses to deny this one, you know? The laws that we put in there that we try to strengthen, there's the justification for denying and saying, "No." It's not, it's the accumulative effect of too many alcohol outlets and too many outlets, tobacco outlets, that is causing the highest crime rates in the city and the lowest health rates in the county. And, you know, if we've gone through the process of redistricting and tried to get old council members out, new council members in, so they can appoint planning commissioners that are sensitive to our needs, that's the reason, that's what's driving us, that nobody's listening to us. When we come in, we talk to you, we beg you to prioritize children's needs over business needs. You guys haven't listened to us. You haven't. So you've got two new members of this planning commission, and just the last time that a tobacco outlet came before us, for the first time that I remember, the chair of this committee of this commission voted to deny that outlet. So I thank you for that. But the same thing needs to happen today, that we get a majority to say no to it. Thank you.
Sorry, thank you, Mr. Flores. Is there anybody else here to speak on this item?
Hello, I'm sorry, I'm a little foreign to this.
What is your name?
My name is Nancy Adore.
Nancy.
And I am the daughter of my mom right there, who's gonna be the future owner of this smoke shop. And my, this is my brother over there, who will be also working there.
Okay, so you are the applicant.
Yeah, can I ask how may I address you, just so I could.
Chair Nemeth is fine, or?
Okay.
You can say commissioners, that's fine.
Sorry, I appreciate it. So I do understand where my fellow citizen is speaking out of. I studied four years of biology, and I'm well-informed about how the effects of tobacco can affect future children and environmental causes and all of that stuff. I do understand that very well. However, we all know that correlation does not mean causation, and however, so therefore, we can't just say that just because the existence of a tobacco smoke shop will lead to all these things. The children are definitely the future, and so we will always be respectful of that. That is why we have ID policies in check. We will never overlook that. Both my mom and my brother are actually cashier men and cashier women at liquor stores, and therefore have been working in this industry for, I want to say, eleven years now. And so nothing like this would ever implement the children. That also goes to our behalf to educate the children. I work at a daycare, and I take it personal to just actually look after children and would never pass that kind of thing on to any kind of kids within the community. I would actually advise against it. But for those who do consume these products and are, you know, consumers, we have such places do exist. We have been working for, to actually gain a business for the past, I want to say, ten years through, I don't know how I can explain this further, but we've been looking extensively. And a lot of hard work is being put into this. To finally own something that is ours, we could profit from, and I know that there can be some downsides, just like there can be some really good sides. You can bring profit into this shopping center, into this, into this town in general, especially if this business succeeds. And so I hope we can all see that, and we can agree to opening this shop. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adore. Could you please remain up here for one minute in case any?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Firstly, is there anybody else here to speak on this? And, oh, Miguel, I forgot, is there anybody in telephone land?
Not at this time.
Okay, sorry about that. Okay. Then, do any of the commissioners have questions for the applicant, Vice Chair Henderson?
Yes. In the application, one of the items that's described as being sold is paraphernalia. Can you describe what is paraphernalia?
Oh, these are tools that are used for consumption. Sometime they are, sorry for my lack of professional language, but I guess they're like pipes, or I'm not very familiar with the industry, but like they're pipes, or they are pongs that may have been used for smoking purposes.
Now, are they specifically only tobacco-related, or are they paraphernalia that could be used for other kinds of drugs, let's say?
Such as?
Like marijuana.
Oh, I'm pretty sure it's tobacco. However, we may have some glass products that may have been related to marijuana use. I'm not very clear on that, to be honest. That will be discussed in the, I'm sorry?
Crack pipes? I don't know. Would that be a paraphernalia item?
Would they be? Sorry, my brother is more familiar with these things than I am.
Yeah, could you please come forward and state your name, and if you can answer those better for the commission, that would be ideal.
Hi, my name is Nabeel Matthew Adore. I'm the son of Bethan Adore, the owner and future smoke shop. To answer your question, all tobacco utensils, I would say, are meant for tobacco use. What our customers choose to supply themselves with or inject themselves with is not of our choosing. With further, as you say, crack pipes, they're meant to be used for tobacco use. If you've seen the old age's many movies, describe a cowboy smoking a pipe, or just simply enjoying their tobacco. All the marijuana uses and rolling papers, if you look back at it, it's all meant to be used for tobacco. What our customers intend to use it for is none of our business. We are just the distributors. What they choose to do with, that is of their choice.
So when you have customers come in, since tobacco requires you to be, what, eighteen or twenty-one? If somebody is under eighteen or twenty-one, whatever the age is, are they even allowed in the door?
Well, they are allowed in the door, but as far as we see that ID and it states under the age of twenty-one, we have to dismiss you from the whole.
Oh, it's twenty-one, is it twenty-one?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
Oh, okay.
As far as that, I would kindly tell them to leave because they, other than T-shirts possibly, clothing that we may be able to sell, they cannot purchase anything from that store. Possibly, possibly the drinks, water, a beverage. I could sell them that, but as far as anything else in the correlation to smoking tobacco, will never happen, ever.
When I think of the old days' pipes, it's like the Sherlock Holmes, a big pipe, and all those are.
All that's changed is we've made them easier to be accessible to the likes of the non-rich or the non-wealthy. Because if we look back in time, the rich smoked the finest of cigars, the finest of, they drank the finest of wines, the finest of everything. All we've done today and presently is just made them more accessible for the likes of people with not that much money.
Okay, thank you very much. Do you have any other questions?
And just they had mentioned that, I guess, the vaping stuff, that's illegal in Palmdale, there's no vaping? So you're not gonna have any of that.
Oh, as far as that, no, it won't be distributed.
Okay, alright. So I'm just looking at those things because that attracts maybe an element that
Of course.
could be bringing in crime, and we don't want to bring in crime.
Hundred percent.
So, thank you very much.
Sure. Do any other commissioners have questions for the applicant?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Alvarez?
Thank you for coming and applying. I'm looking at the calls for service that were generated between June eighth of twenty-twenty-one and June eighth of twenty-twenty-two that the sheriff's has reported. There were at least eight.
Yeah.
Right? And I won't go over them, you probably already know, but my question to you is, now that you have that information as you're trying to move forward, what preventive measures are you taking to reduce those calls? And how would we know?
So cameras will be installed all around the store, as well, as you've seen in the map of the store, of how we constructed. There is a backroom, and so we'll have a screen where we would see everything that's happening in the store, as well as what's happening outside of it. We are also, I believe, planning on building, do you know these metal gates that close around like liquor stores or smoke shops? There's these metal gates. Those are also installed for further preventative measures. We also have silent alarms, as you've read on the papers. Those are also triggered when, say, somebody enters the store beyond actually opening hours. And so those will also be in, there will also be, as you saw in the papers as well as the application, there is, I believe it was a three-inch door or whatever, for the inside room where if there's any counting of money or anything like that, will be held inside. We will also present, be having an, like an alarm button thing.
Okay.
Under the register.
I don't know.
I don't know, yeah. But that's the one to be triggered, like, within operating hours, within somebody being in the store.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Alright.
You are aware about the flavored cigars and stuff, okay?
Okay. Okay.
I do have one question. Can you tell me about your safety protocols?
Other than the alarms?
Yeah, other than the alarms. She said that you guys will be going through some kind of training? That the employees will kind of, could you elaborate on that, please?
So tobacco training, I believe, can be either online or an actual class, and both my brother and my mom, who will be operating the store, will go through that training. I don't know the length of it, but it will be, they will be informed about all the kinds. I think it depends also on city. So all the rules of the city, like, for example, flavored tobacco, as well as who to sell to, how to, like, distinguish certain, you know, hints about somebody who is buying these products, as well as what is, I think, inside them.
Oh, as far as what she's saying, she might be mentioning pouches, tobacco pouches. They come with just rolling paper and like general tobacco. All those things, all those things, excuse me, could be taught to us in the class to prevent certain measures from customers using them in the wrong, such as what he mentioned is other paraphernalia drugs. Now, as far as what we will guide them to do, we will guide them to do the safest thing possible, which is stay away from those drugs that he, Henderson, the chairman, suggested. But as far as safety measures go, more than the cameras, the alarms, the classes that we can take, there's no other procedures that can better prepare us for this.
Okay, you said that you will be presenting ID, if they are consumed, will be presenting ID. Is there a protocol into identifying if someone has a fake ID?
As far as fake IDs, I'm pretty sure in the class, they will give us hints on upon where dates are placed, signatures are placed, how you can tell. Signatures are placed, how you can tell, uh excuse me, how you can tell the difference between a real ID and a fraud. As such as where the name is placed, the date, the picture, all the all the clearness in within an ID.
Also, there are machines in which you can scan.
Many seven elevens have those machines.
Do you presently have those?
Not started construction on the actual store, but.
We're waiting for approval before to spend this amount of money that we've waited so long to just go into a business and get something back out of.
Thank you.
Okay, um based on what you have been saying, Ms. Nadour, you sound quite well versed in the conditions of approval. They are rather tight, um as as you were expressing, you do need to be fully trained. You have to have the alarms, you have to have all the safety and security features. So just for the record, um I would like you to say, have you read and do you understand the conditions of approval? That are being discussed here this evening.
I actually read that whole application. And I translated to my mom in Arabic, so.
And do you understand that if a problem does arise as a result of your business practices or operations that are detrimental to public health, safety or welfare? Including an increase in the number of calls to the sheriff's department, that the planning commission may review the CUP and may revoke it. Alright, any other questions for the applicant at this time? Alright, thank you very much for coming and I know that was a little nerve wracking, but thank you for for going through. Alright, thank you. Alright, is there anybody else here to speak on this item? Alright, then if there is no objection, we shall close the public hearing on this item. Alright, the public hearing is now closed. So we can have a motion or we can do some discussion on this, which I guess somebody prefers.
I'll make a motion. Make a motion to adopt resolution PC two zero two two dash zero two seven. Approving conditional use permit twenty-two dash double oh four and find that the project is categorically exempt from environmental review.
I'll second that.
Alright, I have a motion from Vice Chair Henderson. And a second from Commissioner Frogasains. Now that the motion is out there, is there any discussion on this motion? Alright, then may I please have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Alvarez?
No.
Commissioner Elise?
No.
Commissioner Fragasines?
Yes.
Vice Chair Henderson?
Yes.
Chair Nemeth?
Yes. Let the record reflect that the motion passes with three yes votes. And congratulations, do a good job, keep our community safe and. We hope not to see you back in here actually, so um you are free to go now. You don't have to sit through the rest of my meeting. I am not offended if you leave. So, thank you very much.
Alright, that will then bring us to item ten C. Sarah again.
So this is a request to establish a California Department of Alcohol Beverage Control type twenty license. For the sale of beer and wine within a grocery store, Sprouts Farmers Market for off-site consumption. Um, located within Palmdale with within the Palmdale marketplace on Ten Street West. The project site is located on in yellow. The grocery store will take over a vacant tenant space within a developed shopping center in the planned development zone of the Palmdale Trading Commerce Center, specific plan. The proposed alcohol use is permitted subject to approval of conditional use permit application. No exterior modifications are proposed as part as uh as part of this application. As interior and exterior modifications have been processed administratively through tenant improvement and minor modification applications. Alcohol sales are incidental to the primary grocery store use and less than ten percent. I'm sorry, less than three percent of the floor area will be used for the sale, storage or display of alcohol. Beer and wine sales are expected to constitute less than five percent of the total sales volume. And the grocery store will um will operate between seven and ten, uh seven AM and ten PM daily. Per the Palmdale Municipal Code, the planning commission may consider the following to determine if the conditional use permit should be approved. Whether the proposed use would result in an over intensification of alcohol beverage establishments would be located in a high crime area. Other information regarding the surrounding area and the hours of operation. The two methods to determine over intensification, as defined by the Palmdale Municipal Code, are population density and retail density. The population density method compares proportion of alcohol establishments to the population in the city to the number in population within the subject census tract. There are currently sixty-two off-sale alcoholic beverage establishments within the city of Palmdale and twelve within the subject census tract. Using this method, there is currently an over intensification of off-sale establishments. Because there is one off-sale establishment for every three hundred sixty-eight people in the census tract. And one for every two thousand seven hundred thirty-three people citywide. The second method um is the retail density method, which considers an over intensification to occur when the number of. Establishments within a twenty-four hun- uh twenty-five hundred foot radius of the proposed site exceeds the average number of establishments within a. Twenty-five hundred foot. Radius of a sample of twenty randomly selected off-sale establishments located within commercial areas of the city. Using this method, the site would have an over intensification. Because there are are an average of four licenses within the radius of the sample location and eight within the radius of the project site. Um, however, the the project site is located in a census tract that has a higher proportion of commercial and industrial uses to residential uses than most. Of the census tracts within the city and therefore a higher concentration of businesses with alcohol licenses is expected. As such staff um has no issue with the location and does not believe it is inconsistent with the municipal code. Next, a high crime area is defined as an area with a crime rate of a hundred twenty percent of the citywide average. This map shows that crimes that occurred within the the crime reporting district in which the project site is located. It would be considered a high crime area because it exhibits a crime rate of three times the citywide average, however. The Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department has not indicated. Um, any opposition to the conditional use permit and there were no calls for service between May twenty twenty-one and May twenty twenty-two. Additionally, this project complies with all location standards for incidental alcohol sales as specified within the specific plan and the Palmdale Municipal Code. Um, because the project is located within an area that experiences an over intensification of alcohol uses as defined by the munis- by the municipal code. And is within a high crime area, a determination of public convenience or necessity would be required to establish this use. If the pl- if the planning commission determines that a determination of public convenience or necessity. Is appropriate, staff will notify the Department of Alcohol Beverage Control the of the determination. And with that. Staff is recommending that the planning commission adopt the resolution approving uh conditional use permit twenty-two dash zero zero five. Making a determination of public convenience or necessity and find that the project is categorically exempt from environmental review. That concludes my presentation, available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Staknick. Do any commissioners have technical questions for staff at this time? Okay, then I shall open the public hearing on this item. If anybody is here to speak on this item, please come forward and state your name. And you will have three minutes.
You've heard that um there's high crime rate in the area. Pretty exorbitant crime uh numbers in the area. And you've also heard that the area already exceeds the number of outlets. Uh that ABC would allow. If this were not your decision and it was only ABC's decision, ABC would be denying this application. Because that area is unduly concentrated. However, there's not been an application that this group has not allowed. That I can remember, not one. But you've got all the justification, all the rationale for it. And remember this because. As commissioners have talked in the past, it's been. Clear that the thing that the crime that they need to be concerned with is only the crime that's related to that specific. Address and it's not. The crime you should be concerned with and we've been asking you to take a look at is the crime of the district, the reporting district. In which that business is located and they've already told you it's in the eight hundreds. It should be two twenty-seven. And it's in the eight hundreds. That's the crime you should be looking at. And I thought once upon a time, uh Mister Henderson, Commissioner Henderson, that. You had asked for that data. You wanted to know about the general crime, but at another meeting you said no. I'm only concerned with a crime related to that specific address. Was very dis- disconcerting for us cuz we thought we were getting somewhere and it turned out we were not. I ask you, please. Take a look at the whole crime and don't look at one outlet. Take a look at. The massive outlets in that area cuz that's what's driving crime. It's not one business. I hate to do this because it sounds like I'm talking bad about the business person, the applicant. And they may be fine people. We have nothing. We don't know anything about them. We're not here to say these are bad people. You shouldn't give it to them. We're saying no, the area is saturated with outlets already and it's causing crime. Not just to that outlet, but to that area and the residents that live near are the ones experiencing the results of that. Please, you've got two reasons to deny this today, undue concentration and high crime rates too. You shouldn't be finding. Public inconvenience and necessity. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mister Flores. Is there anybody else here to speak on this item? Alright, I see a hand being raised in video land there. Ms. Dickerhoff, you have three minutes.
Hi, thank you very much, um Chair and Vice Chair. My name is Terry Dickerhoff. I represent Sprouts Farmers Market. And um we're very excited to come into your city. It is a great location. We've been looking at it for a long time. And um I think it will be a great addition to the neighborhood. Uh Sprouts is a full-service grocery store. It is um. Organic, it is bulk, it is gluten-free, it is healthy, it is, you know. Fruits and vegetables and, you know, I I like to. Say it's kind of a cross between Whole Foods and Trader Joe's where it has its own line similar to Trader Joe's, but it also sells. Mainstream groceries and bulk items similar to Whole Foods. And so I. While I understand that the area is both over concentrated and high crime. This is a grocery store that would be coming in, hours of operation between seven AM and ten PM open for the convenience of. People going to work, people coming home from work. It's not late hours. It's not, the main focus isn't on alcohol. It is. On uh groceries, sundries and um if the alcohol sales are just a convenience to. Have a one-stop shop when you go to pick up your food, you can also get beer and wine. And I'd also like to emphasize it is beer and wine only. It's not a full alcohol. Uh license that we will be requesting. It will only be a type twenty for beer and wine. So I hope that you will approve this location and. Um, I'm here to answer any questions that you may have about Sprouts or. Um, our security or our training or anything else that I can help you understand. Uh in how the the grocery store operates.
Alright, thank you very much, Ms. Dickerhoff. Do any of the commissioners have questions for the applicant? Okay, Commissioner Elise?
How many jobs do you will this uh location generate for the city of Palmdale?
It's a great question. So it's typically between eighty and one hundred jobs. That includes both full-time and part-time. It obviously depends on how busy the store is, but since this is the only. Sprouts in Palmdale, we are hoping that it'll be very busy and very successful. So hopefully more on the hundred. And uh range.
Thank you very much. Do any other commissioners have questions for the applicant?
Um, will there be um like single can refrigerated sales of, let's say, beer? Uh offered for sale?
There is a component to the um sales that would be single can, um well, it's actually. Uh bottle. So they do sell kombucha, which is in sixteen ounce bottles. Um, and there are also some browlers and microbrews that they sell that are also sold in the larger bottles. So, yes.
Kombucha has alcohol in it?
It does, I know, right?
What is the latest that you anticipate the hours being? Aren't we cutting it off at ten o'clock?
The store is open till ten?
No, nothing later than ten. And it's just grocery store stuff, right? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have questions for the applicant?
Thank you for the presentation. The numbers that stick out at me is uh over intensification, right? Citywide, we have over sixty-two type twenty. Active off-sale alcoholic permits, if you will. When you presented it. The words that stick out to me was natural, organic, healthy. And then you stated that. When it comes to revenue and sales, only five percent of what you're requesting here today. Will result from what you're requesting in sales. So I have a hard time. Understanding and moving forward with uh on one end. An excellent store when it comes to what you described.
Excuse me, Commissioner Alvarez, is there a question in this for the applicant, please?
Do you seek, wh- what is the reason, the main reason that you are asking? For this particular type twenty license? What is the push and pull behind that on the part of this grocery store?
So I it's a couple of things. One, it is a a full-service shopping experience. So if you have the option going to a Trader Joe's or a Whole Foods or a Vons. Where you can do your grocery shopping and you can pick up your beer and wine at the same time and we don't have that um. Available at a Sprouts, then we're going to lose the business. So it's more of an accessory business or an accessory. Sales for people to come in. So it's in, while it's a very small piece of the overall sales. It's a very important piece so that people will choose Sprouts over. Uh Trader Joe's or over a Vons. And so it's very important to have that component piece. Um, as one of the offerings. And um additionally, the Sprouts has beer and wine. They're they're a growing store. I don't know how much you know about Sprouts and. I won't bore you with the whole history, but it is a store that is expanding very quickly. And that's not, I don't mean to say that in a bad way. I mean, it's been expanding over years. It's not a quickly. Where it's gonna, you know, boom and then bust, but they have been taking over spaces that where Albertson's has gone out of business or other big box. Uses have gone out of business and they are growing and they're growing in California, which is where they started and then they're growing also across the country. And so it's sort of that uh that McDonald's mentality, if you will, where you wanna have the same experience in every store. Because, you know, you want somebody who shops in California to maybe shop in um. You know, Colorado because they know what to expect. They know what products to expect. So. It's a, it's sort of a two-part piece.
Thank you, Ms. Dickerhoff.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, are there any other questions? Okay, Commissioner Elise?
Is there a limit for purchase per customer in um? in, um, for, uh, alcoholic beverages?
In all the years of doing it, I've never been asked that question before. I don't, I don't know. Um, and not because I don't want to answer the question. I absolutely do. My, I don't think so. Um, but it's a, it, it's a very small case that it, the display is and there's a fairly small backroom storage area, so if you were gonna buy a lot, you'd kind of wipe out the whole instant store. But I can follow up on that question. I can ask operations.
Thank you. I would, I would appreciate that.
Sure.
Okay. Are there any other questions for the applicant at this time? Okay, Ms. Dickerhoff, I do want to, um, just confirm that you have read and you do fully understand, um, the conditions for this conditional use permit?
Yes, we've read them and we've signed off on them and I submitted paperwork back to Sarah.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, thank you for your time. Is there anybody else here to speak on this item? Okay, then if there is no objection, we will close the public hearing on this item. Okay, the public hearing is now closed and that will bring us to discussion or a motion on the item. I would like to say that I do understand, um, the high crime rate. I understand the intensification, but I also understand that the location is in a commercial district where people do go to go shopping. And I also understand as a housewife, the convenience of going to one location to purchase what I want. And so I would say not necessity, but convenience is, is integral, I think, to offering um, everything at a full-service store that you expect to be a full-service store. I like the hours, seven AM to ten PM. Sounds like a good, good quality, uh, set of hours for a grocery store to be open. So I do believe that the, um, resolution is well-written and I do believe that it is appropriately located and it will not cause a significant threat to our public health or our safety, peace and welfare. And I believe that with the proper training on selling the alcohol that is conditioned, this would be a safe and beneficial use for our community.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution PC two zero two two dash two, I'm sorry, zero two six.
I have input, if I may.
Oh, yes, you may.
Um, thank you for putting that. Um, you know, it's, I was reading and researching although I embrace the body of what Sprouts represents and as the applicant stated, um, healthy and the foods and, and, and then also hear what you're saying, the convenience uh, and the hours and, and, and that's a good rebuttal. However, as I researched the data in this particular area, crime rate dot org tells us one of the applications in that specific area, uh, you color coordinate the crime rate in that area. Green, lightest green being, hey, this is a safe area. The darkest of, uh, red and orange, meaning, uh, it's, it's high crime. Well, this particular area presents and data speaks that it's given a rate of F. That particular area. Keeping that in mind, as I read this, is over-intensification. Keep it in mind, we already have citywide sixty-two. So on my position, uh, um, I'm leaning to, uh, uh, leaving it as it is or maybe further discussion. Right?
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Um, again, uh, I move to adopt Resolution PC two zero two two dash zero two six approving conditional use permit twenty-two dash zero zero five, make a determination of public convenience or necessity and find that the project is categorically exempt from environmental review.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion from Vice Chair Henderson and a second from Commissioner Fraga Sains. Any discussion on the motion? All right, then I will call for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Alvarez?
No.
Commissioner Elise?
Yes.
Commissioner Fraga Sains?
Yes.
Vice Chair Henderson?
Yes.
And Chair Nemeth?
Yes. Let the record reflect that the motion passes with four yes votes. Thank you, Ms. Dickerhoff, for your time being here this evening, and thank you, Mr. Flores, for your comments as well.
Thank you very much.
And that will bring us to item ten D. Once again, Sarah.
Ten D?
Um, so this is a request to establish a California Department of Alcohol Beverage Control Type forty-one license for the sale of beer and wine for onsite consumption within existing, within an existing bona fide restaurant, Black Bear Diner, located at four zero zero two six, Tenth Street West. And the project is, is indicated in yellow in this aerial photo. Um, the project site is located within the regional commercial land use designation and the commercial center zone and is currently operating as a restaurant. Approval of this conditional use permit would allow the establishment of beer and wine sales. Uh, no exterior modifications are proposed. Alcohol sales are incidental to the primary restaurant use and less than one percent of the floor area will be used for the sale, storage or display of alcohol. The restaurant currently operates between six AM and nine PM, Sunday through Thursday, and is open an hour later on Friday and Saturday. Per the Palmdale Municipal Code, um, there are several findings that can be made for this use, including over-intensification, high-crime area, surrounding area and hours of operation. The population density uh, shows that there are eighty-two on-sale alcohol beverage establishments within the city of Palmdale and twenty-three within the census tract. There would be an over-intensification of alcohol establishments because there is one establishment, on-sale establishment for every one hundred ninety-two people within the census tract and for every two thousand sixty-six people citywide. With the proposed location, there would be an increase in the number, um, one hundred eighty-four people within the census tract and two thousand forty-two within, um, citywide. Um, using the retail density method, there are, uh, there would be also be an over-intensification because there are an average of fourteen establishments within a sample radius of twenty selected, um, on-sale sites and twenty within the radius of the project site. How, again, however, um, the project site is located in a census tract with a higher proportion of commercial and industrial uses to residential uses than most census tracts within, within the city. And therefore, a higher concentration of businesses with alcohol licenses is expected. As such, staff believes the proposed location is appropriate and not inconsistent with the purpose of the municipal code. Next, a high-crime area is a area that experiences one hundred twenty percent of the crime rate in the city. It's located, um, in a reporting district that has three times the citywide average. Um, there were no calls for service from the project site, um, received from the LA County Sheriff's Department from June twenty twenty-one to June twenty twenty-two. And the sheriff's department has not indicated any opposition to the approval of this conditional use permit. Additionally, this project complies with all location standards for bona fide restaurants with alcohol sales as specified within the Palmdale Municipal Code. And with that, staff is recommending that the planning commission adopt the resolution approving conditional use permit twenty-two dash zero zero seven and find that the project is categorically exempt from environmental review. That concludes my presentation. Available for any questions.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Stachnick. Um, do any commissioners have technical questions for staff at this time?
I was just wondering what the hours are.
It's, um, six AM to nine PM, um, and then an hour later on Friday and Saturday.
Okay, so not too late.
Till ten.
Any other technical questions for staff? Okay, then I will open the public hearing on this item. If anybody is here to speak on this item, please come forward and state your name and you'll have three minutes to speak.
Hi, my name is Sedina Mann. I am one of the members of the Elite Diners Group team. Um, I don't have anything to add at the moment, but I'm definitely here to answer any questions from the commissioners or any, um, public comments as well.
Okay, thank you very much, Sedina. Please stay on the line because we do have a person in the room who's ready to speak. Come ahead, Mr. Flores. Are you kidding? This was like a Flora's invitation, man.
I did not come for that today. I came to congratulate, support the two individuals who were just, uh, placed in this commission. But anyways, uh, I'm gonna use this time to kind of bring the new folk up to stuff on a lot of the things that are related to alcohol and tobacco, CUPs. Now, just so you know, because a lot of people think that we're anti-alcohol, we're not. We're anti-alcohol outlet density. That's where we're against, not anti-alcohol. We're not prohibitionists. Proof of that is that from the beginning, we told city council that we would compromise and leave a restaurant row alone. It's our city. I live here too. I want a restaurant row. I want to be able to go and, uh, have a beer or a glass of wine at a restaurant if I so desire. Uh, but I don't want our community to be saturated with those kinds of outlets and then see the results that we're seeing. Then it becomes problematic. So I just needed to let you know. Lastly, I'm gonna end with this, uh, um, Madam Commissioner. Um, be careful with what you just did. I have to warn you. You may get yourself into real legal issues because Commissioner Henderson allowed, you guys allowed for the sale of single-serve products to the last applicant and it is against the law. It is against the city's law, okay? Uh, there's a ban on single-serve sales and you guys allowed it. I don't know if, uh, the attorney has anything to say about that, but I'd be really, really concerned about that if I were you. And maybe we consider that statement altogether and we send it, say, uh, to the applicant. Guess what? We're sorry, but we made a mistake. You must not sell single-serve.
Thank you very much, Mr. Flores. Is there anybody else here to speak on this item? And is there anybody else in virtual land?
None at this time.
Okay, do any of the commissioners have questions for the applicant? Okay. Hearing none. If there is no objection, we will close the public hearing on this item. And we are open for a discussion or a motion on the item.
I have a question for the city attorney. If we have the, the ban completely on single-serve,
We're gonna need to discuss that. That's a previous item that we talked about, so that's not pertinent to this.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. He threw me off.
Yeah. All right. Any discussion or a motion on the item? Uh, item ten D?
Uh, yeah, I have a question.
Yes.
I, I don't think I read it clear, but in terms of job development, did they say how many jobs were created? Is it on there? Uh, it may be an oversight on my part.
Sarah, do you recall what the job development on that would be?
I don't believe-
Commissioner, um, when we first, this is already in existence location that we opened earlier this year in twenty twenty-two. Um, we went initially opening, we had about one hundred twenty to one hundred and thirty employees being employed within the restaurant after sales settled and natural attrition happened. We're landing around seventy-five to eighty employees at this location.
Thank you very much. Okay. And may I get a motion on this item?
Make, make a motion to adopt Resolution PC twenty twenty-two dash zero twenty-nine approving conditional use permit twenty-two dash zero zero seven and find that the project categorically exempt from environmental review.
I will second that motion. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Fraga Sains and a second from Chair Nemeth. May we please get a roll call vote on that?
Commissioner Alvarez?
No.
Commissioner Elise?
No.
Commissioner Fraga Sains?
Yes.
Vice Chair Henderson?
Yes.
And Chair Nemeth?
Yes. Let the record show that the motion passes with three yes votes. Thank you very much, Ms. Stachnick, for your presentations today. And that will bring us to item ten E. And not Sarah. Welcome, Jasmine.
Good evening, Planning Commission. The item before you tonight is the East Avenue Q Complete Street Study. The Palmdale East Avenue Q Complete Street Study is a multimodal corridor plan that provides transportation guidelines for a one-point-four-mile segment of East Avenue Q from Sierra Highway to Twentieth Street East, as shown here on the map. The city aims to, um, aid in the creation of the corridor that enhances safety and connectivity to future development and provides multimodal access to the future high-speed rail station. Future development requirements within the corridor plan align with the city's general plan update and are geared toward improving walking and biking conditions. The East Avenue Q Complete Street Study sets forth the following goals. First is to develop a multimodal corridor plan, uh, enhance pedestrian and bicycle activity and safety, develop planning level recommendations to, to address shade and wind, provide a framework for modifying roadway geometry and sidewalk improvements that will pro- promote walking and biking, develop designs for continuous bike facilities and sidewalks, and lastly, ensure consistency with the general plan update. Uh, here's an aero map of the existing conditions. Uh, the study is, uh, within, uh, area that's a hundred and thirty-four acres along East Avenue Q. Um, it is approximately fifty-five percent vacant with the remaining areas utilized as industrial, office, commercial, private institutions, multi- and single-family residences and warehouse uses. Excuse me. Although, um, East Avenue Q is a major arterial, traffic counts collected at five intersections had relatively low vehicle volumes. However, it is important to note that the volumes were lower typically because of the, um, the act, uh, across the region due to the pandemic. The motor vehicle volumes remained under five hundred vehicles per hour and pedestrian bicycle volumes also were, were low with less than five per hour. Currently, there are no bicycle facilities and Antelope Valley Transit Authority Line ninety-eight has six stops within this planned area. Engagement activities were promoted via print and digital, uh, notification, which included flyers, posters, mail card, postcards, uh, social media, press releases, online advertisements, uh, newsletters and email blasts, electronic billboard advertisements and Palmdale Minute videos. And an extended outreach toolkit was provided to eighty-three stakeholders and technical working group members. Um, outreach activities included a survey, two virtual workshops with Q and A sessions, uh, two in-person pop-up events and one youth group focus, uh, focus group. In conjunction with, uh, public outreach, a technical working group consisting of eighteen members representing the local and regional organizations, Los Angeles County staff and the city of Palmdale staff met three times in, in last year. So based on this outreach, the general feedback, uh, received was noted as below. So based on this outreach, the general feedback, uh, received was noted as below. Um, so the dangerous driver behavior and lack of safety uh, for pedestrian bicycle infrastructure is uncomfortable for pedestrians and cyclists. Um, also sidewalk level, uh, bicycle lanes were preferred versus on-street lines and support was received for traffic calming designs and two-lane configurations. Based on this feedback, three, um, potential design alternatives were developed. All three configurations included sidewalk protection bicycle facilities and ample sidewalks and varying streetscape, which includes landscaping and canopy trees and seating and lighting. So here is a recommendation, um, for design. And as you can see, this recommendation includes a varied configuration for, uh, traffic, uh, travel lanes and right-of-way widths for the incorporation of streetscape with key elements, um, encompassed between Sierra Highway and Ninth Street, um, which includes a hundred and fourteen-foot public right-of-way, four vehicle lanes, and two in each direction, a landscape median, sidewalks, sidewalk-level, uh, bicycle facilities, landscaping, and parking on both sides of the street. And from Ninth Street to Twelfth Street, um, a ninety-foot public right-of-way, four vehicle lanes in each direction, or two in each direction, uh, sidewalks and sidewalk, um, level bicycle facilities on both sides of the street, landscaping on the south side of the street, and parking on the north side of the street. And between Twelfth Street and Twentieth Street, we have a ninety-foot public right-of-way, two vehicle lanes, one in each direction, a landscape median, and sidewalks, sidewalk-level bicycle facilities, landscaping, and parking on both sides of the street. And with that, the recommendation is to adopt resolution number PC twenty twenty-two dash zero two two, recommending city council approval of East Avenue Q Complete Streets Study and finding that the study is exempt from environmental review. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much, Ms. Alvarado. I, um, just wanna clarify that what the Planning Commission is doing this evening, i- if we adopt this resolution, it's simply recommending that city council approve this study was completed, correct? We are not saying, go ahead and build this tomorrow, or let me get my bike out on that street next week.
I wish we could. No, it would be recommending city council.
Great, perfect. All right, do any of the commissioners have technical questions for staff at this time?
I do. Um, I go down that street a lot because that's where the Palmdale Women's Club is. And I noticed a lot of residents park in the dirt. Is the study included, a lot of study as far as to make sure that they have their parking still?
Yes, we still will have parking on both, um, sides of the street on a portion of the.
Where the apartments are and everything.
Yes, um, so they do have, um, designs and, um, recommendations included with the study.
Great.
Any other technical questions for staff?
Yes, um, I noticed that there's, um, as I read, there's ADTA, there's the, and the plan, plan says they have six stops, right?
Correct.
In that area, and it also reflects that there's a low vehicle traffic rate, which leads me to believe there's a lot of people there that rely on public transportation. Uh, did you do any study on how many stops are there now compared to what we're, is this gonna be an improvement on stops? In that area?
I believe the six stops will remain, um, with the study area. Um, I don't believe there's any recommendation to remove stops.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Then I shall open the public hearing on this item, and if anybody is here to speak on this item, please come forward and you will have three minutes to speak. And is there anybody out in virtual land?
None at this time.
All righty, then seeing there is nobody, if there is no objection, we shall close the public hearing on this item and, um, either have a motion or a discussion. I would like to say kudos to staff for conducting this outreach during COVID and trying to come up with so many creative ways to get this information out to the community. I know that was a huge challenge. And I think you, um, the report was beautifully presented and I would just like to say thank you on such a great job on this project.
There's one, where was pop-up two? Because that seemed like that was tremendous outreach.
Oh, the locations, I, I'm sure they're in the study. I don't have all pen.
That one seemed like very successful.
All right, so with that being said, would anybody like to make a motion on this item? I will do it then. Um, I shall make a motion to adopt resolution number PC two zero two two zero two eight, recommending city council approval of the East Avenue Q Complete Streets Study and find that the study is exempt from the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion from Chair Nemeth and a second from Vice Chair Henderson. Any discussion on the motion? All right, then may we please have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Alvarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Elise?
Yes.
Commissioner Fraga Sines?
Yes.
Vice Chair Henderson?
Yes.
And Chair Nemeth?
Yes. Let the record show that the motion passes with five yes votes. Thank you very much, Ms. Alvarez for your presentation, Alvarado for your presentation. All right, that brings us to item eleven, Staff Communications. Ms. Tegger?
Thank you. Um, I did wanna note that there is a tentative agenda, um, on the dais this evening. We have four items tentatively scheduled for the August Planning Commission meeting, two tentative maps, a zoning ordinance amendment, and a time extension for a wireless facility. Um, I did also want to share my screen here for a moment. Um, we do have some exciting news in that we are in the very end stages of our comprehensive general plan update project. Um, this has been a four-year-long project and the draft is out in the ether. So, um, we, we'd like everybody to go take a look. The website is PalmdaleTwentyFortyFive.org. We do have a general plan advisory committee meeting coming up. It's our very last one. Um, and it will be in person again, which is exciting. We haven't had an in-person meeting since our first couple meetings back in twenty nineteen. Um, so that will be next Thursday, um, at six-thirty in the Joshua Room of Chimbole. And then we have our, um, public workshop, which will be, um, in the ballroom of Chimbole on August tenth from six-thirty, eight-thirty as well. Um, and the general plan document, the EIR, all of that is online, available for viewing, um, comment input until August twenty-ninth.
Perfect, thank you so much. It's so cool to have it all high-tech and online and that, that will make it a lot easier. So, all right. Attorney, do you have any staff communications? Firstly, welcome to our in-person meeting and thank you for driving all the way out here.
Yeah, well, you saw what I was gonna say. I was just gonna reintroduce myself. Baron Benhausen, your interim city attorney, assistant city attorney. Uh, I did introduce myself at the last meeting, but that was by Zoom, so it is my pleasure to be here in person and I look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you so very much. All right, then that will bring us to item twelve. Our Planning Commission Communications. So I'm gonna start off with first saying, welcome to our in-person meeting, Baron. And I would like to welcome our new commissioners and, um, you survived the meeting? Kudos. It was a long one, but hey, we did it. And, um, I would also like to express my gratitude to Vice Chair Avery and Commissioner Smith for their years of service. Uh, Avery was on our commission for five years and, uh, Commissioner Smith was on for three years. And they served diligently and ethically, honestly, and everything, so, um, if you ever wanna review any old meetings, you can see how those all went, but they were, um, very dedicated to our commission and I thank them. I also wanna thank, um, staff for, I, I don't know what the word is, but surviving the last two months of, of all of us not knowing where we were going to be tonight, so, so I appreciate that. And I also did receive a letter, um, from Commissioner Smith that he asked me to read into the record. So I am going to read that to you. Um, greetings, Chair Nemeth. I trust this letter finds you, my fellow commissioners, and the Palmdale Planning Commission staff in the best of health. Regrettably, I am not able to be with you tonight due to my non-reappointment to this august body of leadership. Since I will not be returning, I wanted to let you, Christina, Bart, Dean, and the Palmdale Planning Commission staff know the joy, honor, and pleasure I have had working with each of you. As a planning commission, I believe we worked well together. While we voted independently and agreed to disagree on issues, we worked with civility, respect, and commitment that was in the best interest for residents in the city of Palmdale. I have learned from each of you and encourage you to keep serving your city and let your light shine. Chair Nemeth, during my tenure on the commission, I have been in awe of your leadership. You have guided our commission with such discipline, order, respect, and authority, all of which we can be proud. Thank you for your knowledge, service, and leadership on the Planning Commission. Much thanks and appreciation to Megan and the Planning Commission staff. You are all so amazing, intelligent, diligent, and committed to ensuring that the commission works well and that all of, and that all of our questions are answered in a timely manner. Megan, I so appreciated the calls I received from you to inquire whether I had any questions regarding upcoming agendas. The way and manner in which each staff presented agenda items were so impressive, professional, and knowledgeable. I am truly going to miss all of you. While I won't be with you on Thursday nights any longer, know that I am with you in spirit. I congratulate our new appointees to the Palmdale Planning Commission and wish you the best. Thank you all for your leadership and service to the city of Palmdale. It has truly been an honor and a privilege to work and serve with you as a planning commissioner. Keep up the great work. Respectfully yours, V. Jesse Smith, former Palmdale Planning Commissioner for District Four. So thank you, Jesse, for taking the time to write that. And are there any other Planning Commission communications?
I was just wondering if we can get an update on that project, um, where the Sprouts was originally gonna be? And what's going on with that? That's, I don't know, is there a name for that?
Are you referring to the one on the, um, northwest corner?
No, Fifteenth Street West.
Fifteenth and Rancho Vista.
Yeah.
So, um, as you might have noticed, there's a fence around it, a construction fence. So, um, the multifamily portion of the project is moving forward. Um, they are in the process, in the very end stages of trying to, um, finalize their grading permit. So you are gonna start seeing, um, a lot more activity on that corner. The commercial piece of the project is also following closely behind. Um, so prepare yourselves for, for a new development on that corner.
Do we have, uh, tenants identified for the commercial portions?
Um, we just have one at this time and it is, um, Pollo Campero. And that way, that's gonna be one of the, the drive-throughout buildings. We don't have tenants identified for the other buildings.
Oh, is it like an El Pollo Loco type of thing?
Um, I have never eaten at one. I.
Oh.
Thank you.
It looks to be outstanding.
Great.
I hear that they do have quite the following, so I'm sure that they will do well here.
Okay, so we have a fast food outlet and then, um, is it, um, s- uh, designated maybe for all restaurants or just a whole mix of different types of things?
There, there are, um, a lot of different uses that are allowed per the plan development that was done for that site. Um, there is still a large, uh, retail building. We are not sure who the tenant is going to be for that. And then there's a couple smaller retail outbuildings, which we don't know the tenants for yet either.
So that the residential component, multifamily, those are all approved and moving full speed ahead?
The plans are getting closer and closer to approval. Um, the grading permit has not yet been issued. The building permits have not yet been issued. But they did receive clearance from CDFW to remove, um, or to do some onsite work, so they have been doing that this week. Um, they're going to start doing some other ground disturbing activities in, in the coming weeks.
So the delays that we had previously when there was, when Sprouts was going to be there, were the, were those SEQA lawsuits or there was something holding it up from the Homer Association?
No, I think, I think that that would be more of a question geared toward the developer. I, I'm not exactly certain what, what the delay was before.
Got it, but they've overcome all that.
They appear to have, yes.
Okay, very good, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other commission communications? All right, well then I shall adjourn our meeting to the Planning Commission meeting of Thursday, August eleventh, the second Thursday of the month at seven PM. Meeting adjourned.